All right, it looks like we got seven o'clock and we'll get this meeting started. It's the regularly scheduled meeting for April the first, 2024. If I could get a roll call, please.
Mullins.
Here.
Wagers.
Here.
Waggonan.
Hanlon.
Here.
Nagle.
Here, if you will, join me for the pledge of allegiance, please. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Anybody signing up to speak? No takers, all right. So we'll move on to the awards section of the meeting for the spirit award. Ms. Hanlon has the spirit awards, all right.
We have a lot of friends that are getting a spirit award. Ms. Vanna, can you?
Yes, I can do that.
All right, I have a pretty good list here. I need Addie Ray, Marley Dixon, Madison Martin, and Talia, am I saying that right? Talia Rushing, Gracie Macy, Bailey Dottie, and Kaia Dover. Did I say that all right? Hey, that's right. Look at all these awesome girls, well, come around so people can see you. They want to see your beautiful faces. So these ladies here are pretty, pretty awesome. They're here for a great reason. So we have Marley Dixon, you want to raise your hand, Marley? There we go. She got second, oh, are you doing? Okay. We're gonna wait on her.
I know.
Marley. Right there. Good job. Okay, so Marley Dixon got second place at a junior high level. And what grade are you in? That's awesome. And the first junior high state placer in Sandite powerlifting history, that's pretty amazing. Good job. And she broke or tied 11 school records this year. That is amazing. Awesome. Did you, did you know that, or is this a surprise? Oh, so, good job, coach. And we have Kaia Dover. She got fifth place at a high school level. That's awesome. Kaia is the fourth state placer for Sandite powerlifting, how much can you lift?
Uh, for what lift? I squat 365, bench press 175, and deadlift 345.
Nice. And it says she's making three consecutive years of program. We have had a state placer, and she also tied a school record for this year. What's the school record? Do you know? Coach! And then we have Gracie Macy and Bailey Dottie. Did I say that right? Massey, sorry. Gracie Massey. And these lovely ladies, they are being acknowledged for being state qualifiers at a high school level. What grade are you guys in? Awesome. And then we have Addie Ray, Marley Dixon, Madison Martin, and Talia, Talia? Okay, Rushing. And they are being recognized for state qualifiers at a junior high level. The first state qualifiers for powerlifting has had at that level. So that's awesome, good job, ladies. And also, all seven girls hit multiple personal records at the state meet, and five of them improved their placing from the state, or start of state. So good job. And our nominator was Kevin Avi. Come on up. You get to say some wonderful things about your young ladies here.
So, starting with Kaia, she is a two-time state qualifier. She is the third one that we've had of that. And then, next year, she's going to be going for the first time, first three-time state qualifier in program history, and going for, hopefully, a state champion. And then we have our, our two seniors. Bailey's been doing it for two years. Almost made state last year, was, was very, very close. And then Gracie was, I've been begging her to, to do powerlifting for three years now, and finally, the, the last year, she decided to do it. I'm glad she did it, wish she would have done it sooner. And then, Marley and Talia are the part of the first state qualifiers we've had at the junior high level. And, and Marley, first state placer we've had at the junior high level. And so they've got a chance to be the first four-time state placer and state qualifiers in program history. So, the future looks bright, and we're very excited about the, the present and the future, and even our seniors that are going on.
No way. Don't, don't worry, those gift cards are safe. I'm not gonna challenge any of them for that.
Okay, I have the pace setter. And if I could get Chelsea Taylor and Cheyenne Wood to come up with me, and even Sarah Finelli. Okay, you guys were nominated because you guys are beyond awesome with your kiddos. Threes and fours and infants even. These ladies are at the ELC, and let's see. Sarah says for Chelsea, always going above and beyond for her class. She encourages her three and four-year-olds, their imaginations, creativity. She comes up with activities and science projects. Yes? For threes and fours? That's super cool. Okay, and parents absolutely love you. So she, she just says that you're an amazing team player, and she couldn't ask for anything more. And then Cheyenne, you're almost a ditto. She says you go above and beyond, that you shape your smallest minds, and you help them study and track their development milestones. The parents love you, feel comfortable dropping off their infants with you, which is huge. You're amazing, your communication with parents, the infants, your co-teachers. You also are an amazing team player. We are so happy to have you both at the ELC. Sarah, would you like to say something?
I mean, that pretty much says it, these two girls, they're, I, I couldn't ask for better employees for our center. I'm just excited to see what even next year brings for us, so that way we can continue to keep growing and have more positive years ahead, and hopefully, some more pace setter awards, too.
Sarah, how many kids do you serve?
Right now, we serve 33. Infants to four-year-olds.
Yes, yes. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Mullins is gonna do the coin of excellence presentations.
Is that better? Okay. It says, "We are looking for excellence," and like I said, in Sand Springs, we don't have to look very far because we got a lot of excellent superstars. It says, "Nominates for the Sandite Coin of Excellence Award are those who have been recognized for achieving excellence through their efforts in representing Sand Springs Public Schools, and/or for their improvement and accomplishments in their drive for self-improvements." So I'm gonna ask three superstars, and I don't use that term lightly, three superstars to join me, to up here. Kyle Wright, Jeff Lyles, and Brian Garrison. I'm gonna give each one of their, their coins to them, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep one of them just for a second because I want to read what it says on it. On the backside of it, it says, "Think right, challenge minds, inspire hearts." And the, these three guys, they do that every day. We've got a list of, let me read what it says, what Ms. Durkey wrote. I'm gonna ask her to please join us, too, because I'm sure she's gonna tell some stories about them. She says, "As great respect and admiration that I want to nominate these three individuals for the Coin of Excellence. Each year, we are able to brag on our students who continue to earn high awards at competitions that happen throughout the year. These students continue to exhibit outstanding performance, whether it's in marching, concert, performance, competitions, or jazz performances. Please see attached documentation provided." And it's like three pages long of all the awards that our kids got because of the leadership of, of these three guys on stage with us. So, very nice. So I, I can't even tell you what all the awards are, because I don't understand them all. But I'm gonna ask, Kyle, you wanna talk about what you guys did? So please.
I think, well, I would just, I would say, I guess my most recent success, I suppose, would be taking the kids to a solo and ensemble contest. And I don't know if you, if you've ever done anything in a large group. It's, it's one thing to do something in a group, where if you goof up, you can hide a little bit, right? But to be alone, or in a very small group, in a room where you know there's a person just a few feet away who's there to be critical of you, and still perform, I think that, that's the truest bellwether of how our kids are doing. And I think 88 of them got the, the highest rating possible, and 27 got the second. And in our world, excellent is, is, is the second highest level. So we're, we're gonna change these to the coin of superior, that's what we call them. But yeah, just couldn't be more, more proud of our kids at all. And just in case Ms. Durkey takes the microphone away from me, I, I gotta, I gotta be a self-promoter. There's a lot of stuff going on in our fine arts groups this weekend. I've left some of these back by the door on the way out. I'd encourage you to take one of these and look this over. The kid, all the fine arts kids in, in Sand Springs schools are doing amazing things, and there's a lot of things going on this weekend where they're showing off, not least of which is the musical, which I'm gonna leave you in a minute to go back to the dress rehearsal and, and, and get that ready for everybody to see this week. So I've talked enough, you, you should never give me a microphone.
I love it, what you said, so.
Listen, they're way more modest, but every time we turn around, there's something new that the fine arts department is doing. These guys are specifically band and instruments. But they are doing a fine arts festival that I can't talk enough about, led by, I think Kyle, you were the one that reached out and said, "Hey, what do you think? This is a new idea, and it's a new plug for all things fine arts," which is great. And I know it took a little bit of fundraising, but it's a festival, so multiple days, which is amazing. Shameless plug, we're doing a podcast tomorrow highlighting In the Woods, which is our play that's coming out soon, like Thursday, thank you. But I, it's constant. You guys presented OSSBA, Jazz Band shows up. Peter Whipple's not here, but another portion of our finance, or finance, not finance. Our fine arts department is about vocal music. I, I just can't go on and on enough. And it's, this is not the only year we receive a list that is pretty long about students that perform well. And when he's saying it's one-on-one, you're fronted of a judge, much like any other kind of tryout, but it's you. I mean, they do some other things, to do-ettes and such as well, but I've actually. It's scary. And so you have a judge, I don't know what the judge looks like, maybe some glasses that, and they're, you know, crotchety. But it's amazing, the kind of work they do. And I have to tell you, I would love to have every one of those kids up, there was a lot, it was overwhelming. But really, good programs are born out of good leadership, and I can't say that enough. So thank you guys for pulling off year after year fantastic performances. Appreciate it. So give them a hand.
All right, now that we've got all the awards out of the way, we're gonna move into our nuts and bolts of the meeting. So if you don't want to stay here and watch or listen, now's a great time to scoot on out. Hey, Sean. Our lights aren't on.
I think there is homework in their future, I don't know.
Yeah.
Is Cindy doing it? There you go. Gosh.
We'll give you one job.
It's probably my job. No, there's more jobs.
Just the lights.
Add some jobs.
One time. All right, if it's okay with the rest of the board, we're gonna go ahead and move up item number...
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three to the top of the list. Do I see any objections?
So just a little bit of background, I want Jeannie and, and Mr. Watts to answer any questions you guys might have. But the community passes a bond election, and then we get to do the fun stuff. So that's what's happening. Many of these items that you're seeing that have been under a little bit of scrutiny from Jeannie and Dick, to be honest, we're getting ready to do that because of the vote of the public that allows us to improve our facilities. So there's several projects that have been bid already that these guys have taken the time to do the, you know, the recommendation to the board. And if you have any questions, I know Mr. Mullins had a question about the generators. I think we answered it, but I want to make sure all of those are covered, okay? Just to kind of add to that, I think people, it's really healthy to know what bond money does. And when we had the storm last June, where we had the damage, there were, were a few of us, including Mr. Beard and his, his family, Sherry Pearson and some others, that were literally moving food out of freezers at the maintenance department so that we didn't lose a lot of food. And so we have never owned generators, and so that was something that we're able to do. It's a lot of stress, a lot of work, a lot of coordination. And these guys, of course, as you know, have a history of just doing what's right by the district, so I'm proud of them. So if there's no other questions, they took the time to come and just be here for the... Yes. Absolutely, I can, I think that's what you sent me earlier, so I will. Right. So it's just the first. Good. Just the first of a few projects that we're gonna be able to capture this summer, based on, we passed a bond issue. Thank you to Sand Springs for a vote, a positive vote of affirmation that we can do those things.
Great, I'll look for a motion that we accept item thirty-three as stated.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Call for a vote, please.
Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Waggonan.
Aye.
Hanlon.
Aye.
Nagle.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeannie, thank you, Dick.
Jeannie, Mr. Watts, thank you, appreciate you coming in this evening.
Thank you.
We'll move on to student empowerment and staff empowerment, please.
Absolutely, so item number seven is where we get to talk about and outline our instructional strategies and our, our personnel attached. You found the end-of-the-year senior calendar. That's just about Charles Page High School, to be honest. And there were multiple events on that, as you know, the end of the year, it's super busy. But they're not the only site that gets super busy. So all kinds of end-of-year activities are gonna be going on at all the sites. But people kind of hone in to the, the senior event, it would outline graduation, all those things. Spring testing, I think the official window opened up this week. Most of our sites, I think, are starting that process next week for spring testing with Jay Roder at the helm as our district testing coordinator. This is a time I choose to kind of lay low, because people are pretty stressy at school sites, as you can imagine, as they try to do their best performance. We're also preparing the new 21st Century Grant. If we are successful, I believe it's due sometime in May or June, May, we will be running three simultaneous 21st Century programs, which is a little bit unheard of. So we're hopeful that we'll get to have an additional program at Pratt and ECEC. With that said, I believe in your board packet, there is a paper, a little graph, that Sean, Mr. Beard, pulled from one of our assessment tools. And I'm gonna let him explain a little bit about it, because we always want data to show progress of students, and this is a comparison, so Sean, if you don't mind, kind of spend a little bit of time.
Yeah, so what you're looking at is actually, this is a data chart that comes from Schooledx, which is a data dashboard that we added this year. Basically, what Schooledx does is it pulls information from IXL, NWEA, Infinite Campus, all these different products that we currently pay for, but that don't work together. And it pulls that data together so that we can look at trends, like basically how attendance is affected, or how attendance lines up with performance and achievement. Specifically, what you're looking at is attendance to after-school programs. So in the orange, you'll see a bar chart for after-school program attendees versus the blue, which is non-after-school attendees. And what we've noticed in, in pulling this data together is that we're seeing that kids that attend after-school programs in the district tend to score higher on achievement on NWEA, which is what we use to test them in math and language arts.
So while we tout those programs to be really fun, they're also really learning. So that's, that was a nice set of data.
Yep.
So examples of after-school programs are?
Well, the 21st Century Program that runs at Garfield and Northwoods, it's run by Jamie Conrad and Laura Huffaker, and all the other people that are involved. And then also at Limestone and Angus, those, those are 21st Century programs. Those are the grants that we currently have. And the third grant that, that Ms. Durkey was talking about is going to add ECEC and Pratt to that mix. So, you know, we, we've gone through a lot of different waves with the 21st Century Program, and we've, we've seen a lot of strides under Jamie Conrad in, in growing that program. And it's just been outstanding, the kids love to be there, the teachers that work for her love to work for her, and they love the program. And so now we're seeing the fruits of that labor with the kids and their achievement on NWEA.
So the beauty of it, parents can take advantage of that program. It's free, which is nice, and kids are able to stay till five, 5:30 at each of those sites, which means while it's convenient for those that work, that really isn't our, I mean, it's our goal to make sure they're safe and taken care of, but are also, also our goal is to provide enrichment and learning opportunities for our kids, and it seems to be paying off, and they have a blast.
And, and those same programs also run as part of, of our summer programming, too. And we're actually going through the process of sending out applications for students to participate in those programs for the summer as well.
So questions for, I just thought it was really great data, and really positive for you all to see the why behind making sure we're trying to hit all elementary schools. Next, Mr. Bivin, as you know, was named, taking over the helm at Charles Page High School. He has been, as we would expect, amazing. He's furiously working to get his team in place, his APs. So as you know, with Tim Ray's exit to Katusa, and of course, Bivin being promoted to high school principal, that leaves two AP positions, where we will have announcement later on this week for the first one, and he's still interviewing for the second position. He's really anxious to get his team in place, because now's the time, it seems early, but not really, to plan for next year, so we're really excited. I hate to see Mr. Trout as a legacy, there is no doubt, but also excited about, you know, Bivin coming in and kind of plowing his own fields, it's gonna be great. Certified job openings, and I'm talking about our teacher certified positions, are fewer than usual at this point, which I love, is still keeping Ms. Arnold really busy right now. She was posting positions as we spoke on the way down. But I think we have 16 right now certified open positions. So for a district of almost 300 teachers, that's, that's phenomenal. So very excited about that. But just know certified aren't the only open positions. We have non-certified, we have administrators, we have support. So she keeps her pretty busy. She said, "It's just that time of year for me." For sure. I, I, I need to mention there's an item, 16B, and a recommendation for you all under the consent agenda to increase stipend amount for our special education teachers and support staff. As you know, we've had two special ed positions over the last two or three years that have been backfilled by some of our retired teachers, which is great. We're happy that they're willing, but we also know that we need to be competitive. And doing a little research with our neighboring districts, we know that they're putting some incentives in place to attract those people. Proud to say, I think, we have filled both of those positions, Carrie, am I correct? Fantastic. Which is fan, I mean, I can't brag about that enough. We struggled, as you all know, too, with speech pathologist, and currently, the last couple of years at least, maybe three, we've contracted with a company named Motor Mouth, meaning they're providing therapists through a third-party agent, which means they're collecting a benefit from that. They're not gonna contract them out and administrate that without having some monetary value for them. And we also have upped our teacher, speech pathologist stipend as well to 15%. So very excited, we're adding a $5,000, I think we're calling it a communication liaison component as well, which is still gonna land us less than what we're paying a company to provide services, and they're our employee, and I think they're more invested in Sandites, to be honest. For speech pathologists, they do deliver, obviously, services to kids in direct therapy, but they also are pretty intimate in just the intervention portion as well. So giving credible advice to teachers for how to help implement some strategies that would promote communication skills is really important as well. So I'm pleased, and I believe, if I'm correct, we've also filled the two positions that have been vacated for a couple of years now, and we've hired those as well. One, okay, one. Okay, we have one, though, which is a grand improvement. So I'm proud of that, and of course, we're asking in the consent agenda for you all to approve that, but it seems super obvious to us that we need to up our game in those, in that field. Sean Beard is in the middle of PD planning for the fall. I think we already have a keynote, and then it's just... Sean Beard is in the middle of PD planning for the fall, I think we already have a keynote, and then it's just that seems like an easy piece when you put out that agenda, but the backstory behind getting all those things in place is not a simple task, so thank you, Sean, to, for doing that. I think that is it, unless you guys have questions.
Let's move on.
Finance strategies, including facilities, is the next portion, that's item number eight. State revenue continues to be on track to finish this year strong, which means we're not in danger of having any kind of revenue failure, which is great, meaning that budgeting for next year is a little bit simpler than it could be if we were in a different place. Probably the big, big news is the resignation of Ms. Newby as our CFO. We're gonna be fine, but she has traveled a good hundred and thirty miles a day for the past two years in Sand Springs, and one additional going to Semino State College, and so it's, it's tiring, it's hard to find a place to live in Sand Springs. We are, we've said that, I've said that for a long time, we need more rooftops for people. Then I think you can kinda find, you know, the, the starter homes that are simple to the larger ones, but the middle of the road, you know, she's expressed a, a big need for that piece, we're gonna miss her, she's done a fantastic job, finances is her gig, I promise, and has kept us in check this whole time, and we're gonna miss her, but again, would wanna wish her well. We are in the middle of interviewing, by the way, they're happening Thursday, we have three set up, and so more to come on that one, but again, no worries. As you just approved the bond work for the summer, we're ramping up, and so I think I sent a previous email just kind of showing the bond schedule for acquisition of the access to our money, which won't happen till mid to end June, meaning projects won't get, you know, really going in full force until July, but you're gonna see Boyd and the central office work start pretty quickly. We're trying to finagle a way for us to go ahead and start the roadwork for the bus drive at Clyde Boyd Middle School, so that in August, when school starts, we're ready to roll with buses, so that's gonna happen probably quicker than July, it takes a bit to do that. But again, thank you to the people of Sand Springs that are willing to support the schools in a big way. The city met Monday night to approve the sale of their go-bonds for the, from their twenty-two election, and as you know, that can, that consists of dollars that will be attributed to the school for the Plaza area, in the downtown area. And then, just one wanna bring to your attention, we do have an action item number thirty-two, it's an update to our nepotism policy, just for board members and relations of who can work for the district. Our language before was super convoluted, in our opinion, OSSBA had cleaned that up a little bit to make it a little bit clearer about that, and so what you're gonna start seeing is we had an email from OSSBA that kinda sparked Ms. Arnold to go on a path of cleaning up some, some language that isn't bad, but we just needed to be cleaner, and so you're gonna start seeing more policy cleanup as we enter into the next few months. Yay for Kristin Arnold, and I think that concludes the finance resource, unless you guys have a question. Move on to item nine, so communication empowering families in our community. End of the year CPH, as you know, the calendar was attached, that's, it's just getting busier and busier, but this is the time of year where we get to do a lot of celebrations and attract families to come in and see what we do in Sand Springs, and honor some kids, honor some teachers, and it really is kind of a showcase time, in my opinion, about what we do here in Sand Springs, that's fun. The local FFA show, you guys, one of my favorites, if you have not been to a local FFA show, you gotta go. You did, oh, was it, it's fabulous.
I loved it, Mike and I went.
Fabulous.
It's, I grew up with cousins that showed pigs and everything, and it just reminded me of all of that, and anyways, it was super fun.
Well, we were shopping for an engagement ring with my son, so I had to miss, but we shut up at first, and they're just thoughtful, and so Mr. Evans had gotten some donut holes to make sure my babies had donut holes, and I didn't get to bring them, and that was terrible, but it's, I, I've said this forever, I think since I was superintendent, had an opportunity to brag about FFA, but they really are about teaching practical, hands-on type skills, and the leadership, I know Mr. Nagle knows, he's had kids that have gone through the program, but the skills they teach are incredible, and they've added to it, I feel like Randy Evans and, oh my gosh.
Anderson.
Yes, Ja, thank you, Anderson, good grief, don't tell him I forgot his name. I did. God, Jason, forgive me, but they ju, I feel like they add components every year that just makes it, I got to take Ms. Hanlon around and show her some stuff, and that was one of the places we went, and she got to see the big metal cutting machine with plasma, I think cutter, it's amazing, the welding. Anyway, I can't brag enough, so again, I would say that to anybody that wanted to listen, if you haven't seen an FFA program, you should.
No, thank you to the IT department that got the laser printer all.
Absolutely, yes, so we've had, you know, some kind of not complaints, but gosh, this facility, but honestly, you guys, it's a donation by the home to let us use that piece of land, it's hard to make capital improvements on things that the board and the school doesn't own, but it, the facility's part of it, but really, the heartbeat is the program, and what our people put into the program, and then what the kids learn, so granted, don't get me wrong, I'm more jealous than the next person about facilities, but what they do in that program is second to none, to be honest, so. Enough of that, unless you have questions. I don't, did you learn how to weld? Yeah. We were simula-
We did the simulator, didn't you, didn't you do the welding simulator?
I feel like there's a video. Uh huh, right, no, there's a video, but she's really keen on taking videos of other people simulating and making you look really stupid, so there could be a video of somebody other, about that, anyway, it's fun. So, any questions about any of that?
Health and safety.
Okay, health and safety. That's always on our radar, you guys, we're forever talking through what makes us a better place to work, safer for employees, safer for kids. Safety meeting, the, I think it's the fifth one of the year, will be held at the end of this month, summer facility is review, review is underway. Scope of work is all about safety considerations, what needs to be repaired, what needs to be replaced. Email, just as an example, we had a couple of doors through safety grant that were replaced at Limestone and Angus. Gotta get the fob on them, and so that's kind of on the radar as well, just a lot of stuff. And then, I brag, to be honest, about the Employee Wellness Center, it's officially open. Bridget Beard's offering Zumba, we're getting ready to enter into an agreement for yoga instructor. I, I meant to check with Mr. Bonham about how many fobs we've issued, and I apologize, because I actually forgot to do that, but I know Bridget taught her first Zumba class, two people. Oh, second.
She's had two cla, she's had two classes.
Two classes, I was gonna say, I think there was more than two people, the biggest, Kathy Burge, and only the way Kathy Burge can do this, ends up sending me an email right after class and said, listen, we need some fans in the front of that, that room, because it gets kinda hot up there. Anyway, so I've got my first complaint about the wellness center, and I was just like, you're welcome, anyway, but it's fabulous, I think people are gonna be really pleased about being able to work out in that place. It's hot yoga.
Okay, so, you can get with Randy.
Yes.
And you can have goat yoga.
Goat yoga, that's a real thing.
At the wellness center.
I think that's, yes.
That is a real thing.
That's a real thing, yeah, I did know that. Yo, goat yoga, no, goat yoga, there's a video, YouTube it, like, get on YouTube and search goat yoga.
Yeah.
That's a thing.
Only if they're fainting goats.
They can do pig yoga.
Pigs are harder.
Lamb yoga.
Never seen those.
Me neither.
There you go, anyway, we're proud of the work we're doing, it's all good reports, Urine's closing in on us, and just getting it done.
All right, thank you very much, one more one consent agenda.
So, a couple things I would bring to your attention, again, item number sixteen B would be the request for approval of the certified special education personnel stipends for fiscal year twenty-five, as well as just kind of a look at item number twenty-two, cuz this is where you're gonna start seeing the resignations, I, I know I've had a couple of you mention it's kinda sad seeing people resign and getting out of their profession at same, I feel exactly the same way, because it is honorable, I can't say that loud and fast and strong enough, I think it's important that we all preach that message, because we are a public school that serves over ninety percent of children in the nation, by the way. So, that's important, I will say, our applicant pool has been really strong for teachers this year, again, this year, I don't, I have no explanation, but I know at least nine, there were nine applicants, last time I looked at some of the elementary school sites for some of our opening, and with sixteen positions available, that was just at elementary level, so we're doing really well, I think attracting, still attracting. Item number twenty-three, the review and approval of the oath of office for Carrie Stuckey, that has happened, but we need a board of approval for that. Item number twenty-five is the new voice services quote for our new televis, telephone service, recommended by our director of technology. Twenty-six is not new, but it's a different name, syllogist software license agreement for our accounting system. That name changed from We Engage to Syllogist, because the company had a shift in ownership, so same hard, same software, different name. Twenty-seven is asking for approval for Tyler Technologies' quote for transportation, it's for training and hardware, I'm gonna let Eric Anderson, if you, or, good night, getting the, that's true, Eric is here, not Jason, Eric, golly, what is wrong with me, if you could help us understand what that is.
So, this is a kind of a three-piece, the first is the tablets, we have Zonar currently, and if you see some of the numbers on the other sheet that was provided, you'll kinda see some of the cost savings, but these are replacing some very inadequate, would probably be the best word, tablets that we currently have. These are the ones that new drivers use whenever they go out, training on routes, if I have to jump on a route as director of transportation, I don't know this city very well, I'm learning it very quickly, but that's one of the things that we do is have the turn-by-turn on that tablet, that tablet also lets us do our pre-trips in the morning. The ones that we have, they kind of fade in and out from time to time, they drop the signal, so you're in the middle of a route, and all of a sudden, you don't have maps, and so it's looking to, to pair up with what we already have through Tyler, which is our new routing software. So, this is a piece of that, this also goes into the GPS system, will come along with that, and then the thing that I'm, I'm most excited about is the parent app. It's a piece of that as well. Parents, we can let them see basically as much as we want them to, so we can give them information as to when their bus is within a certain mile, or if it's a certain time, and that way, it helps with also the communication side of things, if we need to send a message out, we can send out push notifications through the app itself, and parents can know specifically on a bus that, you know, there's, there's these three stops that are remaining, and so we can just send that out to that specific group of people. The other piece was, was kind of the cost savings, and that was what I was ultimately looking at when we started this piece together. Initially, it's gonna cost us sixty-five, but it's about twenty thousand dollars a year cheaper for the service and the tablets than what we currently have, so it pairs up well, it saves us money in the long run, and it was, I thought it would be a good opportunity.
There is an upfront training cost that's a part of that, but it's a one-time cost that we won't incur every year when we renew.
Yeah, that sixty-five includes the training, that includes the software, the hardware, the GPS units, and also the tablets. So, it's kind of an all-in-one, and then year over year, the, the cost is about, saving us about twenty thousand.
Do the tablets just kinda mount on the bus so the driver can keep driving but see them off to the side?
Correct, yes, and they're, they're like the ones we currently have in your car, yeah, they have like a RAM mount that they go on, and they come out and they install those for us as well, as part of the, the package that we had put together.
And then the, the text messages to the parents, that's automated as well, the driver doesn't have to hit buttons or anything?
Well, it, that won't be anything what the driver can be able to do, so that'll be us in the office. So, they call in and they say, hey, this is bus thirty-seven, we just had a wreck, we're at such-and-such location, we can pull up and see exactly where they're at, first and foremost. We know what kids are still on the bus, eventually, if we wanna get into, you know, next year, into the cards that they swipe, so that we know specifically who's on there, and there's a lot of places that we can go with this. But we can just notify just by putting in one sentence into the computer and send them, just those parents from those three stops, a notification, hey, the bus has broke down, bus has been in an accident, the kids are okay, but just something that they would immediately get, that instant feedback, which helps us as transportation too. You know, and then on the, the, the side that I like the most is it helps us from getting as many phone calls at transportation, especially at the beginning of the year, so we're gonna start our training, actually, this month, the seventeenth, is when we start the Traversa, new software training. And so, when we get that thing up and running, we'll have some parents that we can use as kind of a guinea pigs, and kind of try to test it first, but then we can make sure that all of that stuff rolls out when we try to get this going, starting in July, so everything should be a lot smoother for us.
It's a win-win, picture a storm situation where a bus was traveling and had to pull over and take cover at Clyde Boyd. Then you have elementary students at Clyde Boyd, and parents are going, oh, it's a, you know, it's an emergency situation, and parents are gonna be really curious about where their kids are, and so now that tackles this problem without us having to figure out how to use Aptogee, which is our great current system, but in an emergency, not super effective for kids on a bus, so I'm pretty excited about it, I mean, there's other reasons why you would need to know that, but emergency situations is super beneficial.
Well, and even as simple as a, a student's, you know, a bus gets overcrowded, and we have to move this, the group of students off of four oh, four oh five to four oh two, we can immediately just go in and easily send those kids, parents, a text message, and it goes out to them, letting them know that, hey, your kids are gonna be on a little different bus, they may be arriving a little bit different time. So, that's the piece that, I've previously used this at Bixby, so it's an opportunity to, to bring that technology here too.
So, will that also work, say, if they're at a track meet somewhere, and their bus breaks down, will a parent get notified?
I would have to look into that piece, because we wouldn't have the specific list of students, I don't think that would be on those activity trips. I mean, that's a great question, something I can certainly look into, but it's gonna be a little bit more harder, because those, those kids assigned to those particular stops, we know which parents, we know which students ride, sure, there's gonna be a few students or parents that are gonna get a push notification, but trying to that would, we might be able to do something like that with the system, it's pretty, pretty integrated.
I guess, I was thinking about the, I'm gonna get this wrong, RFID cards, that if they could swipe on it, potentially, that could happen, but we'd have to research that, that's not so, we'll get into the training module pretty soon.
This, this also goes into our diagnostic piece, so part of Traversa's transfinder, or the trans, transportation side of things, it goes, if there's a problem on a bus, it's reading a certain code, it'll send John a message to let us know, hey, here's what's going on with the bus, and he can actually pull that up and be able to, to give that information as well. There's a lot of, lot of things to this piece.
Selfishly, it also communicates with Infinite Campus, our student information system, better. We've struggled a little bit trying to facilitate annual statistical report, we have to report all of our students, how many ride the bus, all those things, those numbers to the state department event, which sparks funding, to be honest, and so the communication to our student, our current student information system is more concise and better.
Yeah, these are actually sister companies, so Tyler Technologies and, and our student software are run by the same company, so they've integrated very well together.
I guess things like this mean you don't have that wall-sized map of Sand Springs with the colored lines and the dots and the pins and all that stuff on anymore?
Don't need those anymore.
Not at all.
Well, in all reality, if a bus breaks down, you don't think the kids aren't gonna text their parents in about five seconds?
Absolutely, but they're also getting about twenty calls every five minutes.
Oh, I understand that, right.
But yes, for sure, for sure.
The times we live in.
Yep, and then item number twenty-eight is the last one that I bring to your attention, and it's the last of the consent agenda. Carrie, like you were, and Sean Beard, just spent several hours with an application budget for an opioid abatement grant funding. It takes board approval in order to submit that application, which I believe is due March the ninth, is that correct? I mean, April the, okay. March. Okay. Thank you, Carrie.
The Oklahoma Attorney General's Office continues to give us guidance as they're getting it from the federal government, because it's like a national um abatement grant, and what they decided is that um public entities that are taking the money have to have a resolution from their governing board. So that's all this is, is that I've already turned in the application, and then once you all approve tonight, I'll send in the agenda and the meeting minutes, and it'll be good to go.
I think we're trying to figure the grant application out, because it is new. Um, there was a movement to do a countywide one um application, and we decided to kind of go solo, because we wanted to make sure we were in control of the funding, because we have some good plans for it, if we can access it. So, but it does require board approval.
Does Chairman make a motion? Will you approve the consent agenda items as listed?
I'll second.
I have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda items. Any further discussion? Call for vote, please.
Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Hanlon.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye. Uh item twenty-nine, any need to go into executive session to, for employment of temporary teachers? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on item thirty.
I'll move to approve the temporary teacher employment recommendations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, as listed in twenty-nine and thirty.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for a vote, please.
Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Hanlon.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye. Item thirty-one.
Item thirty-one is to uh approve a revised calendar for this school year. As you know, if we have any inclement weather days, the, we're required to change the calendar, and it requires board approval. So if you'll remember, we had four uh inclement weather days, January sixteenth through the seventeenth, and then two additional, January twenty-second through the twenty-third, um which required us to reduce the number, total number of instructional days. Um we don't make up days, because we calculate minutes in that case, um but it does require board approval, because it is a change in the calendar.
I'll entertain a motion. We approve item thirty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised school calendar for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Call for a vote, please.
Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Hanlon.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye. Well, item thirty-two.
Item thirty-two is the policy I discussed earlier in my uh report about nepotism for board members and employees. Um we would ask for first read approval tonight, simply because it is a cleanup policy that doesn't change what we already do and what's required by law.
I'll make the motion to approve the revised policy, the revised uh nepotism policy.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for item number thirty-two. Any discussions? Call for a vote, please.
Was that a second from Whitney?
Yes.
Okay. Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Hanlon.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye. We have done thirty-three. Any matter not known today?
There is not.
Any announcements?
Not today.
No April Fool's jokes or?
I know. I, we thought about this this morning. You, you know, you're gonna need to ask those two what they were gonna do to my office this morning, and they better be thankful.
Those two?
They, more work, more work.
No tomfoolery.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
You go, girl.
Literally, let's go, girl.
I need a second, somebody.
I'll second.
Okay. Call for a vote, please.
Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Hanlon.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye. I'm out of here.